Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission at 5:30 PM on the 12th of May, 2020. I'll introduce the staff. Our Development Department Director, Jason Gutierrez, our Planner, Trish Chavez, our Administrative Secretary, Peggy Johnson, our Deputy County Attorney, Charmaine Reed. Also for the record, I would like to note that our County Attorney, Eric Nelson, is in. This commission and the commission members now. On my far right is Commissioner Jim Brown. On my immediate right is Commissioner Hal Hutchison. On my far left is Commissioner Tom Davis. On my immediate left is Commissioner Bob Bailey. This commission is an advisory board for the Natrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearing, this hearing is recorded, and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the commission holds a public hearing unless application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application that will be held in this room on the 2nd of June, 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners. This is interesting. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor of the application, then those opposed. I'm going to have to skip this one. This is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience, which we do and don't have. You must be recognized by the Chair before addressing the commission. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion on the minutes of the last meeting that we had.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of the minutes in the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission of March 10th, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move into the agenda items. The first on the agenda is the CUP 20-2, a conditional use permit by Dynosolar LLC for 240-megawatt utility-scale solar energy system on a portion of land north of Casper and west of Bar Nun. With that, I will ask for the staff report, please.
Just a second, Mr. Chairman. Let me make sure we have everyone in the, in the meeting.
Are you good?
Not quite yet. We're getting there, though. Can everybody hear us all right?
Guess not.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. How do I sound? Good.
Are we good to go?
Believe that's everybody, Mr. Chairman. We are also going to, at your pleasure here, we'd like to combine both the CUP application and the variance application into one hearing. At the conclusion of that, after we hear all the evidence, if there is a desire, we should make those clear when we go to vote to approve both the conditional use permit and the variance. But we'd like to, to combine them both into one, one hearing.
One, one, okay. Yeah, that's fine. But two, two motions.
Yeah.
CUP and the variance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have CUP 20-2. It's a conditional use permit and a variance request in an application by Dynosolar LLC. Holy cow, here we go. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow a 240-megawatt utility-scale solar energy system and a variance to reduce the eastern setback from the 1.25 mile from a residential district to 0.63 miles. The Dynosolar project will be located on a portion of a 3,591-acre lease of north Casper and west of Bar Nun. The fenced area of arrays is expected to be approximately 1,710 acres. The project location and all surrounding properties are zoned urban ag. Here's our location. You can see in the purple there is Bar Nun, so we are west of Bar Nun. And the green here is the proposed solar area, and the crosshatched is the lease area that is in the conditional use permit. From a zoning standpoint, again, that's all urban ag zoning. A little more background. In January 2020, the BOC approved a resolution adopting emergency regulations for utility-scale solar energy systems, solar farms. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we did not have specific regulations in our zoning resolution that addressed utility-scale solar installations. So we adopted emergency rules. We're allowed to adopt those one time for 120 days, and that one time can be extended an additional 120 days. So we are currently in that second approved adoption of 120 days, and they are good to through September of 2020. These emergency rules were drafted using Sweetwater County's regulations. That was the closest large-scale solar installation to us, so we, we crafted our regulations after them. The Dynosolar project is a large-scale solar project that will generate 240 megawatts of electricity, split between two substations. Again, a little more background, they've been working with numerous departments and agencies on the Dynosolar project prior to making an application with Natrona County. Those agencies include the Wyoming Game and Fish, the Wyoming Department of Transportation, the Natrona County International Airport, the town of Bar Nun, and the Natrona County Fire District. Enyo has also hosted an open house for the surrounding property owners at the Bar Nun Elementary on February 25th, 2020. Timelines, if the project is permitted, the estimated timelines is as follows. Access road construction and grading initiated in September of 2022. Components of the electrical system and the solar array, construction of the module installation, approximately 15 months from September 2022 through November 2023. Commissioning is scheduled for late 2023, with commercial operations beginning in December 2023. The project's lifetime is expected to be 35 years, thus extending the project through December of 2058. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn it over to the group here to give a more detailed presentation of their proposal for your consideration.
Okay, that's fine. Who speaks first?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll go ahead and start. My name is John Masterson. I'm an attorney practicing here in Casper, my hometown. Throughout the last 35 years or so, I represent Enyo LLC. I've also done a number of projects with Christine Watson Michael, who you're going to hear from in a moment. I think that you'll find the folks at Enyo and Christine to be very candid, people who are ready to answer whatever questions and respond to any comments you have, or that the public may have about this project. What we had anticipated, Mr. Chairman, was that Ms. Michael is going to lead us through a slide deck that will go over the details of the project. We also have, as you can tell, a lot of folks who have called in that are the engineers and experts who helped put this application together. If there are questions that come up for people with that particular area of expertise, with your permission, we'll ask Christine to coordinate that and make sure that the right person is addressing any questions or comments. The only other thing I wanted to do, Your Honor, Your Honor. I don't know if that's a raise or not. The, I wanted to note that the application was timely filed for today's hearing. As has already been noted, it was noticed and published for the required time period. We've seen comments that did come in and attempted to respond to them, and want to express our appreciation to the staff at the county who's been very helpful in coordinating this and doing the logistical work on this, not only the substance of the application and even before the current COVID situation came about, but since then and in coordinating this. I think it's a, it's a good project for the county, Mr. Chairman. I think you'll see that as we walk through the application. I think it brings a lot of benefit to our county, and I'm going to turn it over to Christine, and she'll go on with that slide deck. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Masterson, who did you say you represented? I'm sorry, I missed that.
I represent the applicant in this case, sir, Enyo LLC.
Enyo LLC, is that the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Christine?
Thank you. You may notice that we're having some technical difficulties with pulling up the slide deck, so I will begin, and while I'm talking, I will try to pull up the slide deck as well, if that's okay.
Sure.
But I believe I have the slide deck before you in a hard copy, so I'd ask that and refer to that while I'm speaking. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for accommodating on this call.
Christine, I'm sorry, I needed to interrupt. The Board does not have the slides in front of them. I'm also going to try to get the, the slides up. If, if, if you want to just give us just a second, we'll see if we can get it at our end, too.
Yeah, I will, I should be able to get it up in a minute, but I can, I can speak about the company and go slide look for a few moments. With me on the call are my colleagues, Emily Still and Michael Levy, as well as many of the experts who performed the studies that are in the back of the limited application that we provided to you. They are here, available for questions at the end of my presentation, should we have them, or to answer questions from the public as well. Upon you asking questions, I, I will call on the person best to answer the question, and we'll give them an opportunity to introduce themselves, their company, and answer the question, if that's okay. I will go to the first slide that you can't see. The name of the company, of my company, is called Enyo Renewable Energy. It's a joint venture between my company and Enyo LLC and my partner MAP Energy. We've been partners for over 10 years, and much like oil and gas, Dynosolar LLC is a project company that's under Enyo Renewable Energy. So the applicant is Dynosolar LLC, and the parent company is Enyo Renewable Energy. I believe Emily has the slide deck that you can see now. Is everybody able to see the slide presentation?
Unfortunately, it's not Emily. It's, it's me, so kind of, kind of cue me along as needed.
Okay. That sounds great. So I'm on now the slide deck titled MAP Background, so slide three. Super, thank you. So my joint venture partner in Enyo Renewable Energy is MAP Energy, and MAP is one of the oldest and most successful private energy investors in the United States. They have over 30 years of experience, so they have $2.4 billion under management. And what I wanted to point out today for you is that of that $2.4 billion under management, 1.4 billion of that capital was used to invest in mineral interests, covering natural gas and oil production. And between 2000 and 2005, MAP procured $55 million in mineral interests in the Heindale Anticline, the Green River Basin, and the Powder River Basin. And I just share that with you because I've had experience in Wyoming, developing projects there for 10 years, but MAP also, my partner, has been involved in the oil and gas industry in your state for, since the year 2000, for 20 years. Next slide, please. Here's a MAP, just a little bit more background about MAP. You can see their oil and gas interests across the United States, and in Wyoming, they have oil and gas interests in every county but three. And the, and the reason why they decided to enter into the renewable energy space of an investment is because they saw the compatibility, compatibility between natural gas and renewables. So in about mid-2000, they started investing in renewables, and in 2009, they invested in a company that I was working at. You can look at the next slide. Thanks, Jason. You can see here, my background is in 2001, I started with the Renewable Energy Program for the state of Utah. 2007, I developed and the first renewable energy utility-scale project in the state. And then in 2009, I partnered with MAP to start developing renewable energy projects. And in 2016, we decided to start developing solar resources. Since 2016, we have either negotiated or we're on the process of negotiating 500 megawatts of renewable energy contracts. So by the end of 2022, our wind and solar, we'll have 500 megawatts of wind and solar projects operating in the ground. The next slide shows a sampling of some of the solar projects that we've negotiated power purchase agreements with, or have contracted. You can see here, we have folks who want to buy our power that include the University of Utah, Intermountain Healthcare, which is our largest healthcare system, cities like Park City and Salt Lake City, key areas like Deer Valley and Park City, and a very large commercial and industrial customer will be buying 155 megawatts of our solar projects. So you can see we've had recent accomplishments with executing power purchase agreements in the state of Utah. The next slide, as you recall, we submitted our application in March of, March 20th of 2020. And as we put the application together, we really took a look at what were the requirements to have a conditional use permit approved. One, that it won't contribute to the overburdening of the county services, that it will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood, and three, that it won't detrimentally harm the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. So as we present tonight, I hope you will agree that this application does not contribute to the overburdening of the services for the other two points on that slide. One of the questions that we have heard in our meeting with the airport board and in open houses is, why, why here? Why are you, of the 62 million acres in Wyoming, why do you want to put your solar project here? I just wanted to share a little background about what, what is here. The things that we need in order to develop and build a solar project are the following. One, we need to be close to a transmission line or a substation. Two, we want to be sure that we don't interfere with any kind of mineral extraction. You may have seen what occurred in southwest Wyoming, Sweetwater County, where a solar project was built over Natrona Resources. We want to stay away from that. We want to be, be careful and considerate of the wildlife resources that exist in the state. We need private landowners who are willing to give us enough acreage to place the panels to generate the power, and of course, we need to have fairly flat land for the panels. The next slide shows the state of Wyoming, and what we did here was, we wanted to visually show you what that means. So of the 62 million acres in Wyoming, and you take away national parks, slopes that are greater than six degrees, areas of the state that are not near transmission lines or substations, federal land, then you end up with this map, which shows that about 12% of the state of Wyoming could really host a solar energy project. And then of that 7.6 million acres or 12% of the state acreage that can host the solar, you have to remember, the one key to all this is that you have landowners who are interested in just buying the revenues they get from their land. So that, that in a nutshell is how we ended up here in Natrona County on the land ownership that we have identified for you. The next question that we hear often is, why now? Why do you need to get a conditional use permit now? Well, the citizens of Natrona County accept their power, receive their electricity from Rocky Mountain Power. Every two years, Rocky Mountain Power analyzes what's called an integrated resource plan, where they look out into the future to determine what resources they need, if they're going to be short on power or long on power. And this last fall and summer, what they determined was that in the future, they're going to need more power, and that they are going to be requesting from individuals like myself, they're looking for 354 megawatts of solar projects to come from Wyoming. So this proposal from them, this will be released this, this summer, and we'll have an opportunity to submit this project and let them know that we have 240 megawatts of power that we can produce for the purposes of their request for proposal. And what we've learned to date, I mentioned earlier that we have 275 megawatts of, of projects in Utah that have or will have power purchase agreements. But what we found in being successful with those through a similar process as this, a request for proposal by the utility, was that we needed to show them that we had a land lease, and we have that here. We have land leases with the solar panels. We needed to show them that we could inject the power into this substation. We have agreements with Rocky Mountain Power, signed contracts to allow us to interconnect or inject that power into their system. And three, it also is paramount to show that we have a conditional use permit, that the project can actually get built under the timeframe by which they want to buy power. So having the, the conditional use permit approved by your body and the Board of County Commissioners is important because it shows the utility, A, that Natrona County is interested in the project, and that it can be built. Thank you. Next slide. So we also, you probably read from the application, the economic benefits that would come to the county. In the first year, the amount of property tax generated is about $2 million. Of that $2 million, about 500,000 of it will go to the Natrona County School District Number One. Over the life of the project, the 35 years that Jason referenced initially, you will see $46.7 million come to your county in property taxes. You'll notice that that number, it's not as simple as 2 million times 35, but the, as the project ages, it depreciates, and so not as, not as many dollars come in every year. The next slide, I talk about the economic benefits. During construction, the project will bring in $8.7 million for sales and use taxes, so the taxes from the solar panels that will land in, in Natrona County. And also about $3 million will come to the county through other taxes such as lodging. So now, I, I wanted to talk about actual projects. And Jason shared with you a bit about the project and its location. You can see that it, it's west of Bar Nun, and up at the top, towards the north end of the project, you can see there is a bit of a space that we've reserved, and that space is for the West Winds Road. And spending time with some of your county commissioners and being in, in the area, it's clear to me that the West Winds Road is an important aspect of, of potential development or growth in, in your county. And so we, we've left an area where the West Winds Road could cut through the project, but I do want to point out that, that, that alignment is not in stone, so if perhaps the alignment were to change, our, our panels, our panels design is flexible, and we can, and we can, we can move panels to adjust for the West Winds Road. Ideally, we'll talk about access in, in more detail later, but we're happy to be a partnership in, in helping to get that, that road built. Some of the other things to note on this, this slide and the picture is, as Jason mentioned, there are two points that will interconnect the power to substations. The north end of the power will be connecting 115 megawatts into the Bar Nun Station, where Jason has the pointer, thank you. And then the south end of the project, we will be connecting to the Tassper Substation heading south. The project will have a fence around it, and you will also notice that there's a road, a perimeter road around the project. And when we were talking with the, the fire districts, I think we all agreed that that's the perfect design for a fire barricade. And the last thing I'll point out is the topography. You can see on the southwest part of the project, most specifically, that the, there is a bit of a hill there. So the, the project isn't what you would see at a typical solar project, being a rectangle or square, but you can see it, it unmulates as, as the topography goes up and down. And so what's nice about this project is the topography actually shields some, some of the panels used from the town of Bar Nun. The next slide, you can see what, what do solar panels look like. I, I assume that you've all been, you've maybe driven around Arizona or other parts of the country and have seen the panels, but in case you haven't, I want to just point out that the picture on the top is not what we're talking about. I know there was some concerns in the airport community that perhaps we were talking about installing concentrating solar panels, but we are not. The panels that, if this were permitted and built, you would see in the ground are the panels below on the second picture. You can see that when these panels are installed, that vegetation still can, can grow. I know many people are worried that once these are erected, we will completely graze the site and nothing will grow, and I, I do, do want to just share with you a picture that, that, that there is still vegetation that can grow under the panels. The next slide, in case you wanted to see an interesting photo, we included this here because currently the, the lands where the panels would be are where sheep graze. So if you believe that the vegetation will grow, and then you worry about what will happen if it grows too much, and it could be a fire danger, you can see, you can have your sheep go underneath the panels and, and graze freely. The next slide shows the actual height of the panels. As you can see here, the, the blue are what we call the photovoltaic panels. Then you have a galvanized steel post on the side that's about five feet. And then at the top of that post is a computer-controlled tracking system, so these panels actually will move with the sun. I see that my slide deck is not there.
I apologize, Christine, that we thought Emily was trying to get in here.
Yep, I'm adding mine now. Thank you, Jason. You did excellent. I don't, I hope, I hope Emily can do a great job like you did. So here, here are the panels. Again, I'll just mention, they're, the, the panels move with the sun, and there's a little motor that you can see on the top of the galvanized steel post that I wanted to point out. On the next slide, this actually shows the panels moving throughout the day, and shows the maximum height you could see on the single axis tracker that we've proposed for this project. So at greatest height, as you can see on the right, the panels will be no higher than eight feet, seven inches, and then at its resting angle, when it's flat, it will be no taller than six feet. So now that you have a sense of what the panels will look like, it was important to us, and also a requirement of the permit, that we worked with the county to identify the points around projects and take photos and create key, and take, and take photo simulations. So working with the county, we identified these key observation points, and at each of these stars, we took a photo, and then we put the panels in the place. The first photo that I wanted to show, point out was a point south of the array, about 2.15 miles from the project, and this is from Highway 2 through 7, and looking a little bit to the right. You can see the panels on the left side just above the oil tank. The next photo is at the same location, but we're looking towards the left, and again, you can see the, the panels in the far, in the far distance. On the next slide, this actually shows the panels moving throughout the day and shows the maximum height you could see on the single access tracker that we proposed for this project. So at greatest height, as you can see on the right, the panels will be no higher than eight feet, seven inches. And then at its resting angle, when it's flat, it will be no taller than six feet. So now that you have a sense of what the panels will look like, it was important to us and also a requirement of the permit, that we worked with the county to identify the points around projects and take photos and create key, and take photo simulations. So working with the county, we identified these key observation points. And at each of these stars, we took a photo and then we put the panels in the place. The first photo that I wanted to show, point out was a point south of the array, about 2.15 miles from the project. And this is from Highway 237 and looking a little bit to the right. You can see the panels on the left side just above the oil tank. The next photo is at the same location, but we're looking towards the left. And again, you can see the panels in the far distance. And I believe that in your conditional use packet, you have all of the visual simulations that we created. And I might say that if you ever have the interest, WLC has all of these in larger format that you can view. The last key observation point I wanted to point out today was one that we took in the town of Barnum from KOP3. This is about 0.9 miles from the project, and you can see just past the transmission line up on the horizon are the panels. Many of the citizens in Barnum who came to our open house had concerns about the reflective nature of the panels. And so just to be clear, the way that solar works is that the panels actually absorb the solar for the sunlight and convert it to electricity. And they also have an anti-reflective coating on them. And so it's the fact that panels are not as reflective as, say, water or glass or metal. So this is a good comparative slide, which shows you that solar panels don't actually, are not reflective as, say, water, a body of water or glass or metal, like a metal roof on a house would be more, cause more glare, the reflectivity than solar panels. So because the airports and the city of Barnum are within three to four miles of our solar project, we conducted a glare and splint analysis. We asked AE Comm to perform that with us. They're on the call tonight along with a couple of other members of their team that helped with the glare and splint analysis. And I'll reserve for the more technical aspects of what they did for them, should you have questions. But I want to point out the project is outside of the airport overlay district, and that the only time that one could see glare, and in this point, I've not done a great job explaining, so hopefully I'll be better tonight with you, but glare will only exist in the morning, at sunrise, and at sunset, you can see this slide, when the panels are flat. So when we asked AE Comm to provide this glare study for us, we said, what would the worst-case scenario be for glare? And when they have a resting angle of zero degrees, which means the panels are flat, as you see on the right side of this picture, that's when you would see the most glare, or at sunset, when again the panels are flat. But what we can do and what we will do to eliminate glare is to simply change the resting angle of the panels. So here on the right, you'll see a panel that's yellow. That is a resting angle of zero, completely flat. That's when you would see glare. But during the operations of this facility, we will never have it at zero degrees. We will always have it resting or starting at the beginning of the day or ending at the end of the day at five degrees. And what that means is if we never have our panels at zero, we will eliminate all glare. So we have committed to doing this, and we're happy to have you include that as a condition of the permit, that we never have our panels at zero degrees to create glare, because we can eliminate the glare if we have the panels at five degrees. So a little bit more detail on the glare analysis and results. As I mentioned, AE Comm can talk more specifically about the report in our application. But what we have done is we worked with the FAA, we shared with them the locations of our panels and asked them if they had any concerns with those panels. The FAA came back and they said they saw no problems with the panels, and that was in terms of how tall the panels were. They didn't evaluate whether there was splint or glare. They just said, the panels are okay with the highest height that you have, eight feet, seven inches. We ran the glare model, and we were also able to demonstrate voluntary compliance with the FAA's solar policy. So the FAA has a solar policy, and our glare study and our mitigation complies with the FAA's solar policy. I'll have AE Comm and team get into more details, because I suspect that this will be a question that you may all have to ask. So I'll go to the next slide and talk about the variance. I believe Jason asked that you consider this this evening as well. As Jason said, your variance was implemented on January 7th, and as part of that, you had a setback of a minimum of 1.25 miles from any residentially zoned property. And looking at the United States and other counties and municipalities who have setback distances, we found that, on average, the most extreme distance from panels to non-participating dwelling was 500 feet. So very similar to what you see in the oil and gas industry, where you have a minimum setback of 500 feet, is also what's commonplace in the United States. In states like New York, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Michigan, North Carolina, Wisconsin, Virginia, Maryland, Florida, and Utah, where I live, all of these states have a maximum setback of 500 feet. Minnesota has ones that is as small as 30 feet in terms of setbacks. So we would like to request a variance of that. As you can see on this slide, the nearest residences to the project are 3,400 feet from the town of Barnum, and we are 2,100 feet from the nearest structures. We believe that this variance is appropriate, because I showed you earlier the visual simulation from the town of Barnum. We believe that the visibility is very minimal. We also have met with the town of Barnum and the mayor there, and you'll see a letter in the packet on Appendix A, Tab 11, stating that Barnum waived their objection to the setback. And then I also want to point out that our private landowners were also okay with this setback, because they would like to develop their land as they see fit. And then finally, we also believe the variance is appropriate, because we believe there are no negative impacts to the surrounding community. There are no noise, there's no noise from the panels, no pollution, no emissions, no moving parts. And I have included a couple of sections from your code that I believe also dictate that this variance is appropriate. Moving on to minerals, as part of your application, we were required to give notice to the mineral owners. And within the project area, there were three of them. Two were landowners, and the third mineral owner is the BLM. The BLM doesn't restrict development of private surfaces, and there are also no active oil and gas leases. I mentioned earlier that my partner, Mass Energy, has many interests in Wyoming. They did an exhaustive survey or study around the project and found that we're about 10 miles, I believe, from the closest oil and gas well. And of course, there's no Trona mineral deposit. Game and fish, I mentioned when we talked about suitability for solar, is important to consider wildlife effects. We met with Wyoming Game and Fish Department, and I take a statement from the letter that they provided to the county, which you may have read as well. And they appreciated that we cited the project in proximity to urban areas and outside of big natural range and state trust for population. They've asked us for, if the project moves forward, to build the project outside of the nesting season, which we would comply with, also that we install bird converters on the perimeter fencing. In addition, we've also talked to them about the potential, if an animal were to get caught up in the fence or inside the facility, that we work with them and possibly provide them a keep, so that we can together work quickly to ensure that we keep on the lake safe. Dust erosion and weed management, I know is a concern for many people. We all know Wyoming is windy and blowing dust is not appealing. I want to just point out, because you're not privy to our lease, but our landowner lease does guarantee that we have dust suppression. As I'm sure you know, dust is not good when it lands on the forage for the sheep that may graze there. So it's really important for the landowners, not just from a good neighbor perspective, but also for their livelihood, to ensure that we, that dust suppression is guaranteed. WLC is here tonight and is able to talk about their drainage, erosion, dust control, grading, and vegetation removal plans. Just point out that they received accolades from the Nitrona County Weed and Pet District on the report they helped us with. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the areas they touched upon in their report. One area that I want to be sure that we understand is, the project is about 1,000 acres, and only, based on the WLC's report, only about 128 acres will need to be graded for the solar panels, and that's in the northern part of the area. Generally, the project is flat, and so there's no need to grade it. The only time that we would grade for the solar panels is there was a slope greater than 60 degrees. If there's a slope of greater than 6 degrees, we would grade it to the appropriate grade. We would take the topsoil, push it to the side, we would put the panels in, grade it, put the topsoil back, and reseed it immediately. And so, and we also would be working in pods. So when we're constructing the project, we would start in smaller acreages, say 30 acres. We'd work and put the panels there, then we'd go the next 30 and the next 30. So at no time will we be grading a grade extent. And when we do grade, which is very minimal, less than, I guess, 10% of the project, we would be keeping that in mind and ensuring that we immediately put this topsoil back and re-vegetate it. On the roads, we'll obviously have to grade the roads, and we will grade the roads about 6 to 8 inches, and then we'll put gravel on top, and we'll have either a magnesium chloride truck or a water truck that will go around the site to ensure there's no dust from the roads. But if you do have questions on this, Shane Porter is available to answer questions. What happens if something, if the project suddenly stops working? Who will decommission and reclaim the site? Our lease, again, with our private landowners, require us to have a decommissioning bond in place at year 15. And so that bond will be put in place to ensure that if anything happens, the project will be decommissioned and reclaimed. And that includes taking everything from the panels, all the way down to three feet under the ground, removing it, and recycling as much of the materials as we can. Access routes, here is, again, the red is the outline of the facility. Sorry, there we go. You can see that WLC did a traffic study and looked at a couple of different routes. The routes that we're looking at primarily come from Salt Creek Highway to Melody Lane, Andy Lane, and then to the project site. As I discussed initially, we believe that West Winds Route is the best route, and from YDOT's perspective, I believe that that route is a possibility, should we get the necessary easements we need from the landowners off of West Winds Road. But currently, we will be able to use the West Winds, or I'm sorry, the Salt Creek Highway to Melody Lane, because those are our county roads. And UDOT or YDOT did ask that we add a turning lane there, should we use the route from Salt Creek Highway to Melody Lane. As indicated in your, in our application, the estimated construction timeline is over about a 15 to 16-month time period. We would start in September with road construction and grading, and then move forward and complete the following year. And finally, workforce, we anticipate that we'll have about an average of 116 workers over the 15 to 16-month construction period. And we plan to hire as many local labor force as we can. We estimate that we'll be able to supply, we'll be able to, sorry, meet 25 to 50% of the project's total workforce needs from local hires in the county. And with that, thank you for your time, and understand that we have a little bit of a technology foible, but appreciate that, and we're available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Christine. With that, I would ask commission members, do you have questions for her?
I do.
Jim?
Inasmuch as the existing application encompasses both a conditional use permit and variance, it occurs to me that of most concern to adjacent landowners in the variance application will be such things as lighting, noise, traffic, dust, fire suppression, things of that nature. Could you maybe address some of those things to make this less impactful to landowners, primarily to the east?
For, I'll, I think you asked, if you don't mind me rephrasing your question, you had a question about light?
Sound, noise, dust, fire, things of that nature, a concern to citizens to the east of it.
Sure. As I indicated, the nearest residence in the town of Barnum is about 0.63 miles away. There will be no noise. As I mentioned, the panels move from side to side, they have a small motor, so there is no associated, in terms of lighting, the only lighting that will be seen and will follow the guidelines of the county would be on the substation or two substations, and the lighting could be pointed down, and so we don't anticipate any light pollution. I will let maybe Evelyn Carpenter from Solus Energy Consulting talk about maybe dust, and maybe explain it better than I did, if you would, Evelyn?
Sure, thank you. This is Evelyn Carpenter with Solus Energy Consulting. So we focus on construction management of renewable energy projects. And so an important thing to note about solar is that between rows of panels, we actually just compact native soils there, and we're not regrading and taking everything out. So the rows between panels for access during operations, that's all compacted native belt. What you're going to see are the roads in and out of the facility, where we're actually grading and gravelling. And so typically, what a construction contractor will do is come in and put down a course of magnesium chloride, which basically keeps dust from spreading during transportation of panels and things to the site. If magnesium chloride isn't a product that you all allow in the county, they'll go through and do dust control with water trucks, and those will run on a regular basis. And to the extent the magnesium chloride road breaks down, they'll come in and reapply as needed and monitor during the, during the construction of the project. From an operation standpoint, after construction of the project, there will be people who are on roads servicing panels, there will be a full-time crew on site that's maintaining roads and panels and the motors and things like that. And so that will be folks with a four-wheel-drive truck driving around, but there's not a high volume of folks driving around during operation of the project. And so the dust from, you know, any four-wheel-drive vehicles during that time period is pretty minimal. Does that answer your question with respect to dust?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have one more question, if that's...
Shoot.
No, shoot. Yeah. Insofar as access from the south, the road just north of Melody Lane is paved, I can't pronounce the name, it sounds like Polynesian, it's La Hanga or something like that. Maybe somebody can help me out with that. Thank you, Warhanna. It is paved to within about 250 yards of Andy Road, and it would seem that would be logical to try to utilize that paved portion during the construction phase. I realize that the Melody Lane turn has been widened to the extent on the west side, where a turning lane is probably more reasonable, but I'm just proffering that suggestion as far as ingress. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Wright? Thank you. Chairman Wright, if you'd like, I could answer. We can get Commissioner Brown's question answered by Shane. Shane, would you like to discuss if that would be an option, and what you believe might be required for that?
Yeah, sure. This is Shane Porter. I'm with WLC Engineering and Survey in here in Casper. Runona is definitely another option, and it's something that we looked at initially. I think it's something, we were cognizant, Runona has more, there's more activity on Runona as far as existing businesses and existing traffic. And so, we were looking, leaning more towards Melody, just to relieve some of that strain on that existing traffic at that location. But it's certainly an option that we could look at, or that we have looked at. I mean, I think it fits the project as well, as an alternative.
Thank you. Okay. Hal?
What is the blue route?
Thank you, Chairman Wright. The blue route is, if you were to come off West Winds Road and immediately turn south on the Fortera Cement Plant, and go around, and then you would intersect to Doris McMurray's land. We've been working with Fortera on that route. We don't yet have an active agreement negotiated. We do have agreement from Ms. McMurray to utilize the blue route that heads south from Fortera and then west towards the substation. So that, the active agreement we have with Ms. McMurray includes that portion of the blue line, and we're working still on the portion of the blue line just immediately south of West Winds, and then runs west on the south end of Fortera. So that is another option, should we not be able to get the easement necessary to continue West Winds Road in the green path.
Thank you.
Done?
I have some questions for Jason later, but not for Christine, no.
Okay. Bob?
Mr. Chairman, Jason, I'm sorry, I need to get, is the yellow road Melody Lane, is that what we're talking about? And part of that one is Salt Creek Highway? Is that true?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Bailey, that yellow line there, if you see it, that's coming off the Salt Creek bypass, going up past the port of entry, continuing north, and then where it makes the sharp turn to the left, that would be Melody, and then that little jog to the north is Andy. And then, again, the jog to the left end would be across the private property to the side.
Okay, thank you. Christine, has there been any, those roads out in that area are absolutely a mess, and they've been a thorn in the side of, I'm pretty sure, the county road and bridge for years. Is there any plan to upgrade that road as you start with your trucks and equipment in there, to upgrade some of that road through there at all?
I, sorry, Chairman Wright, I'm happy to answer that question. Yes, we understand that that road does need some work. We're happy to work with the county on trying to upgrade as much as we can. I don't know that, I believe it might need some significant drainage work on it to get it to the correct standard of the county, but we're happy to have that discussion with Jason and staff about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
No questions at this time.
Okay. I have a couple I'd like to ask. I had the opportunity to, Christine, I had the opportunity to be out there Monday, and I know some of that country pretty well. It is extremely fragile. And I worry about degradation of the topsoil and the wind blowing, that's part of it. The other thing is, I'd like to know from your panel experts, how did they stand up to high wind and variations in wind, please?
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Shane, do you want to maybe take that, being a local civil engineering group, and then if, Evelyn, if you want to chime in after Shane, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, what we looked at out there, it is, it's a sandy material, and it probably is maybe considered fragile in nature. The good part about this project is just the disturbance is very minimal overall, and it's really just during the construction activities. So the nature of the soil, you know, can be protected during construction through the best management practices of road control and those kind of things. And then, you know, once construction is complete, the soil should stabilize fairly easily with the vegetation that we would put back. But it's really just during the construction project, and it's up to, you know, the best management practices to keep things in place.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Now, as far as the panels go, please.
Christine, would you like me to address that?
That'd be great, thank you.
So I'm actually a structural engineer. I'm not licensed in Wyoming, but forgive me on that. But so, the panels are supported on steel piles, and we actually engineer the steel piles for wind uplift. And so, the engineer will look at the site-specific wind conditions and uplift of those piles at the site and design for those. Additionally, it's very common that, as you're doing your geotechnical program, you'll go out and you'll actually do pile driving and testing on the strength of the piles within the soil. So there's actually a geotechnical process involved where you do pile pull testing, so you can understand, you know, what the uplift is going to be on the piles and how much the soil can take. So it is a process that's done between geotechnical and structural engineers for that wind load. So they will be designed, the racking system will be designed for any potential uplift. And it's a good question, there is uplift on the panels. So that is something that we engineer during the course of the project design.
What about the panels themselves?
The panels themselves are also designed for wind loading. And Arun, I'm going to pass over to Arun, if you want to talk about the specific wind loading on the panels and how they're designed to withstand that.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. My name is Arun Ramadas. I'm a consultant with Solus. And yes, Evelyn, so the panels themselves are designed to handle both wind and snow loads. Since they're always exposed to the environment, they are engineered to handle heavy wind and snow. And a combination of them being attached to the racking system and the piles themselves, they technically share the forces between all of the, the whole system as a whole. And so, the panel itself is able to withstand not only wind, but also snow load on top of them.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I had one other question, maybe for Christine. On the variance side, I believe one of your slides said that the closest house or the closest structure, I'm not sure what the term would be right to use there, was 2,100 feet from this project? And you're saying that it's six tenths of a mile? Eastern border comes within 3,400, I assume that's feet, of residents on the western edge of town, and 2,100 feet from the nearest structures? And you're asking for a six tenth of a mile, well, we'll call it a setback, whatever we want to, whatever the term wants to be. But 2,100 feet is about four tenths of a mile, so you're short there. Is there something wrong with your numbers, or am I wrong, or are we going to be too close in there? We want to get it right.
Thank you, Chairman Wright. That's a great question, and I can see where I've created some confusion here. Jason, I don't know if it's better for you or Trish to answer this question in light of our conversation, in terms of the variance and it being from a residential zone versus a structure. I don't know if you're allowed to answer the question, but you might do a better job of it than I.
Sure, you can answer.
This is Jason, Christine. So our zoning, our emergency regulations, the setback is from a residential zoning district. It doesn't go to a structure, it's to the residential zoning district. So, let me see if I can follow here. So, they're asking for the reduction to the zoning district, which would be the, the .6 would not be. That structure, I believe, 2,100 feet from the nearest structure, there are some county structures out there. Perhaps that's what they're measuring, too.
Does the Worthington guy know?
Shane, do you have an answer for this?
Shane, do you have an answer for that?
I'm sorry, I did not catch that question until it was made.
We were talking about these distances from structures and zoning districts, et cetera. And on the slide we have up now, it says Dyna Solar's eastern border comes to within 3,400, I assume, feet of residences on the western edge of the town of Barnum, and it says feet, and 2,100 feet from the nearest structures. And could you, can you enlighten us about those distances? Because those are not six tenths of a mile from where we, where they're asking us to be, or to reduce our, reduce our distances down.
Maybe I could take that. 3,400 feet is the distance between the closest panel and the closest residentially zoned home in the town of Barnum. 3,400 feet equals about .6 miles. So that's the distance that we're requesting for the variance. I apologize for the confusion. The 2,100 feet is the distance to a structure from the nearest panel, which yes, is closer to .4 miles. But the way the variance is written is that it's from a residentially zoned, from residentially zoned, which is what I...
Right, I understand that, okay. But do we know what is 2,100 feet away as a structure?
I believe it's a barn or some kind of facility. I haven't been out there.
There's some belief that that, Christine, could that be the distance to the Cree Tech's plant?
No, it's the distance to a structure that has some motorcycle tracks around it.
Yeah, so there is a, there's like a shop-type building that is west of Barnum's projection, that is in the county.
Oh, okay.
And so that would be the, Christine is, if I'm following what she's saying, that is the distance to that structure. So they do not need a variance to be the 2,100 feet. The rules call for a zoning district, so the 3,400 or .6 miles to a residential zoning district.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I understand, okay. Is, should that be zoned something different? Should we look at that at another time?
Urban ag would allow you to have...
I know, but I was just going to write that down as a note, in case we needed to look at that later.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
I'm not real sure how to proceed from here, seeing how the audience is in disarray back there.
We, I do have a few more slides to go through on my presentation.
That'll be fine, Jason, please.
So we'll get my screen back here. So, we went through the project timeline. Conditional use permit criteria. A conditional use permit is an authorization which allows a landowner to use his property in a manner that is compatible with the zoning district in which it is located, provided he demonstrates compliance with all standards and criteria incumbent in the zoning resolution and specified by the board. The commission and board shall show, require showings concerning all of the following. One, will contribute, will granting the conditional use permit contribute to an overburden of county services? The applicant's response, the applicant believes that the project will be an asset to the community without an overburdening of county services. The applicant has met with local fire officials to discuss appropriate fire protection measures and technology. The fire protection measures will, that will be put in place, can be found on page six of the application. Like to further add that you saw they did work with Neutrona County Weed and Pest for noxious weeds also. Staffs proposed finding the fact, with the fire protection measures that will be utilized for this project, the project would not adversely affect local public safety authorities or the Neutrona County Sheriff's operations, or detract from their ability to provide projection services to the surrounding community. Two, will granting the conditional use permit cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? Staffs propose finding the fact, during construction, there will be an increase in traffic from workers traveling to the project area. After construction, it is anticipated that two to three workers would make daily visits to the site. A short period of traffic can be anticipated during the decommissioning and reclamation phase. There are no residential components to this project, thus significant project-related changes to population density are not anticipated. Environmental impacts can be measured in the loss or degradation of natural resources. The applicant has developed a drainage, erosion, dust control, grading, and vegetation removal plan that will utilize best management practices outlined herein. Will granting the conditional use permit impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? Adjacent land uses including residential, commercial, light industrial, mining, and open space. Development of a solar facility will not impair the use of these existing uses on adjacent properties. The project would not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. Throughout the project site itself would be converted from open range land to an industrial land use. The area already contains multiple transmission lines and pipelines, and the solar array would be located a minimum of .63 miles from existing residential area. Staffs propose finding the fact, the project will not impair the use of adjacent property. The project will be a minimum of .63 miles from the nearest residential area. The project will not cause long-term noise, vibration, or odor to the existing neighborhood. The panels themselves are low to the ground and use natural landscape as a visual buffer. Will granting the CUP detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution? During construction, there's a potential for generation of fugitive dust, which can adversely affect public welfare. Dust control measures will be used as needed during construction to ensure compliance with applicable county and state laws. Operation of the solar PV facility will release no effluents, toxins, air emissions, or solid waste in the process of generation of electricity, and as a result, will have no impact on public health, safety, and welfare. Staffs propose finding the fact, the applicant has provided a drainage, erosion, dust control, grading, and vegetation plan, waste management plan, reclamation and decommissioning plan, environmental analysis, solar glare, hazard analysis, social and economic report, visual impacts, and a traffic study. Findings continued, the applicant has had meetings with Neutrona County Airport, the Neutrona County Fire District, Wyoming Game and Fish, the mayor of Barnum, where they held this open house for the residents of Barnum. The Federal Aviation Administration has conducted an aeronautical study and provided determination of no hazard to air navigation. The report and analysis do not show a detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the public. The future development of this area is slated to be industrial with the coordination of the town of Barnum and Casper. This has been completed by the applicant with an approved CUP, and variance through the project would not nullify the intent of the development plan or zoning resolution. I think it's important to note that that area through our development plan is slated as industrial growth. That was light, that was to be industrial growth all the way down to 6-mile. That was part of our neighborhood meetings and our plans we had with the entire community, and that was adopted by this body and the Board of County Commissioners. With now, I'm going to shift gears just a little bit to the criteria for the variance. Again, the same testimony for both of them, and...
Would it be possible to vote on the conditional use permit first?
You know, that's at the chairman's discretion. The idea was we'd kind of present everything at once, because there's testimony that may help in the other, but I'm not opposed to vote for the conditional use permit first.
Well, if you want to go through the variance, that's fine, but I would prefer a separate vote on each of the two.
a separate vote on each of the two at the end.
At the end? Perfect.
If that's all right with you.
Okay, that would be, that would be my preference also. We need to have two, two separate votes.
Okay, let's proceed on with the variance then.
So, the...
We need to hear it from the public. We have heard it from the public.
Right.
We're gonna get through that first.
Yep. So, the criteria for the variance, when acting upon a variance, the board shall be guided by all of the intent and purpose, as well as the goals and policy of the zoning resolution. In addition, the board shall require showings of all of the following. Um, I'm not gonna drag us through all seven criteria. They're in the staff report. They're, uh, there for everybody to see. Uh, remember, the geist of a, of variances, you have to prove a hardship. And the variance is to alleviate that hardship, and there's not to be, uh, financial gain gained by that. And what the applicant has shown here is when we adopted those, uh, for lack of a better term, the Sweetwater rules of 1.25 miles that, uh, to a residential zoning district, that that was an undue hardship. And staff would concur with that. As we researched through, um, other solar, utility scale solar installation rules, uh, that's indeed what we found, is that no other rules were that restrictive. This was very, very restrictive. And, uh, so staff would concur that, uh, the variance, uh, would be granted in this instance. Um, they've demonstrated everything, um, as follows. We can go through any one of these seven, uh, that you guys would prefer to see, but, um, we exactly found what the applicant has pointed out, is that, um, weren't excessively, uh, restrictive in that regard. If we'd look on this slide, I would like to point out that, um, the nearest ones is that, uh, right there where the town of Bar Nun kind of jets out to the west on the, the former runways, um, the residents down in the county there on Andrea and Ranana, uh, we are one mile there. Um, as we get up into the, uh, quote-unquote, "the newer part" or the northern part of Bar Nun, we're 1.14 miles. Um, that structure, Commissioner Bailey, that we were, we were talking about, um, sits approximately right in here. That, that shop with the, uh, the motorcycle, um, jumps, if you will, uh, is right in there.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, are we going to throttle Bar Nun's expansion that way then? In fact, we are, aren't we?
Um, that was why we so heavily involved Bar Nun initially, and we, they met with Bar Nun. And, uh, as the Christine, uh, pointed out, uh, the Bar Nun is in favor of this and submitted, uh, their, their comment for it. Um, so it's in the town of Bar Nun's growth boundary, and a small piece of it is in the city of Casper's growth boundary. Uh, so, uh, they recognize that and, and...
We're going to, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna shut off a lot of north and south distance for Bar Nun, um, by, by setting these, by putting it there and having the 1.6 miles. Any way you look at it, we're gonna stop going that way. And I noticed there are a lot of comments against it from the Bar Nun residents, so...
Can I, Mr. Chairman, could I follow up on that question?
Sure.
So, if Bar Nun wanted to expand to the west, would this development mean that nothing could be built in that mile unless they had to sign a waiver or something that they acknowledge that they're closer than, uh, county rules allow?
Well, the, the county rules wouldn't stop them from growing to the west. Um, uh, potentially, if they grew far enough, far enough to the west, if the town grew far enough to the west, and then the solar wanted to grow to the east at some future application, we might have to have another, uh, variance-type conversation. But no, they wouldn't have to sign anything. They could, um, they could develop that land clear, clear up to the, the solar installation.
Mr. Chairman, how could they do that, Jason? Well, if we're, well, we're gonna have six, six tenths of a mile, right? Okay, so that, in my mind, is gonna stop them at that point of six tenths of a mile away from the solar unit.
No, the, the rules are for the solar installation, so the rules don't preclude anybody from building, uh, industrial development up to the solar, or, uh, if the residential wants to grow after that fact, we're not preventing that from occurring. Uh, and then, in fact, as Bar Nun grows, uh, they could go through an annexation period and, and potentially, at some future point, they could even annex this solar installation into their municipality.
Huh, for the record.
I guess I defer to county legal.
Mr. Chairman, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Okay, I mean, that's just...
Their growth boundary, just like Mills was west of Casper.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I, I suppose the, the way to think about that is the, uh, as they grow, they know the solar installation is there, and they're accepting that as they, they grow that, that direction.
Again, huh?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment. Um, for the most part, I have no problem with the criteria for variance. But under .1 and under .5, the term "loss" appears five times. Loss of economic diversification, loss of jobs, loss of this, that, and the other thing. I don't think you can lose something that's not there. I think the, really, the gist of the variance application is .6. Will grant the variance impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? I think that's really the nub of all this. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I guess now we have to open the meeting.
One, one more slide.
Okay, hold on.
So, does Sweetwater County deal with, first of all, would they have a bunch of subsidence? Is that the problem with their array down there?
My recollection of, of their issues, that was a 640-acre, uh, solar development. Um, unfortunately, it was put right in one of the, uh, critical, um, antelope migration paths, and it caused, uh, issues with the wildlife. Um, I believe there was a roadway issue, and then, um, maybe anybody on the phone can correct me, but they also had, um, they had mined underneath it, I believe you are right, and there was some subsidence in the solar panels.
There was a reference to it somewhere in, in the reading material that sounded like it was a big problem. So, another question, though. What's Sweetwater? Where'd they get 1.25 miles? Was that just arbitrary? It sounded good, or...
Unfortunately, I don't know that. Uh, it was a, you know, we were looking for rules to be able to mitigate as many of the, the issues that we maybe were not aware of with large-scale solar. Um, I'll tell you, moving forward, we are gonna permanently adopt some rules. Uh, again, we're only in this grace period through September, and then we'll adopt, uh, new rules. Uh, as staff, we're gonna recommend, uh, far less than, than that when we move forward.
Six miles?
Probably. Even, even .6 is a, is a large, is a large gap in comparison to what we're seeing. I mean, um, I don't know as if I agree with Minnesota's, uh, 30 yards or 30 feet that was, uh, proposed, but, uh, we could come up with a reasonable number, uh, somewhere around that, maybe quarter mile or less type of deal. Uh, that's yet to be ferreted out. We'll look at some other folks. This is a kind of a new, new industry that's hitting, hitting all, all government bodies, and, and so we're, um, learning as we go.
Okay. I guess we have to open the public comment of this meeting now?
One more slide. Staff sent out public notices to 1,500 neighbors within a mile and a half of this, uh, proposed installation. To date, Neptuna County Development has received 52 comments, 35 opposed, and 17 in favor. As of May 1st, 2020, NU has contacted the property owners who submitted comments individually to address their concerns. So, the applicant took it on themselves and went and contacted everybody that had submitted comments up to that point, and had sent them, uh, correspondence back out. Uh, even the, the close property owners, they reached out and contacted them individually. So, uh, they've reached back out to the majority of the early comments. It was these later ones that, uh, they really haven't had time to be able to respond to. Uh, an application was sent to Neptuna County Road and Bridge Department, the Wyoming Game and, or Wyoming Department of Transportation, the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, the town of Bar Nun, the city of Casper, Neptuna County Conservation District, Neptuna County International Airport, Neptuna County Weed and Pest, and Neptuna County Fire District. Staff proposes a motion of vote by the planning commission to recommend approval of the requested conditionally used permit and variance by the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions. One, the recommendations of the Game and Fish Department as stated in the letter dated March 4th, 2020 are adhered to. Two, work with YDOT on appropriate ac- access and intersection improvements through the access permit process, evaluating and mitigate constru- or construction as necessary. Three, construction shall commence no later than December of 2020, or a new conditionally used permit will be required. Road improvements shall, shall be to county road standards and shall be maintained throughout the entire construction phase. This includes dusk and drainage, drainage controls. Access roads shall be restored to county road standards once decommissioning has been completed. So, that kind of leads back to if we are gonna use Melody Lane, we need to construct it to county road standards, we gotta have, uh, dust control on it, and, uh, this next condition, semi and heavy truck traffic shall incur between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. if access is through a residential area. And finally, financial assurance agreeable to the board for decommissioning per the zoning resolution be put in place. Staff also recommends the planning commission incorporate by reference all findings of facts set forth in the staff report and this public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
With that, that ends the staff presentation.
Okay, with that, then we'll open the public comment period, and I'm not real sure how this works, so...
So, right now, we have, uh, the public comments that were submitted, uh, online, and we have a name and a phone number, and so, uh, Heather is helping, uh, us call those, uh, folks individually, one at a time. Uh, we'll get their comment, and then we'll move on to a conference phone and see, um, who may be on there that did not submit via email.
50 people?
You ready?
How many are we talking about?
These two, here.
Correct, yes, there's only two.
Yeah, are in opposition.
Yep.
I read something, 47 have responded or something.
Those are the comments that, that you have in your packet.
Oh, okay. They're not gonna talk.
So, I'm, I'm not sure how we handle this, where we have people to speak in favor. Uh, these two sheets that I have here are in opposition.
I would just go ahead and take them.
Okay, okay. We'll talk about the people in opposition to this then, so, uh, let's start with, uh...
Sorry. Okay. Shelley Burnett? That's me.
Yes, Shelley Burnett? This is Harold Wright, Neptuna County Planning and Zoning Commission. We're here to address your complaint about the solar panel installation, and you are on speakerphone.
I'm gonna put it on speakerphone. Turn that down. Okay, we had to turn the TV down so we wasn't getting the feedback.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, um, as you know, my name's Shelley Burnett, and I've lived on Andy Road for, since 1980. We have a house. It isn't a structure, uh, a $300,000 house on there. And they, this variance, it appears to me on this map, this variance cuts right in at Andy and goes across and up, up, covering that like that block. Um, I'm in opposition of it completely. This is a neighborhood with kids, bikes, uh, it's a quiet neighborhood, and yes, it would be visual. And I contacted, I wrote a letter, and it was forwarded to the envoy company, and they sent me back, uh, explanations of it with a visual of what it was supposed to look like. Nobody has ever told me what, why they need this variance in front of my house. Uh, covering the whole block. You know, it's the, why do they need that?
Okay, if you hold on a minute, we'll get an answer for you. Christine, can you answer that, please?
Um, sure, I'd be happy to answer the question, uh, Chairman. Um, I, I believe the question is, why are we looking for a variance? Is that correct?
Yes.
On Andy Road. It comes right up to, like, the half a mile, and I'll call it a half a mile, on Andy Road, across a residential area that is, all of it is families, it's older folk, in fact, which is a problem, a lot of them wanted to comment, but they're totally technology, they couldn't. But, they're kind of dependent on me. Um, and as this map that I retrieved from the Neptuna County people, you guys, Neptuna County Development, it comes right up against Andy Road. And I, they focused on Bar Nun. We're not in Bar Nun. We're counties, this county.
Okay, Christine.
Um, sure, I'd be happy to answer that. I think there were two questions there. One was why we're asking for variance, and the second one is why, why are we gonna use Andy Lane because there are, uh, residential homes there and, um, um, that might not be compatible, uh, having construction vehicles go through there. Is that correct?
Ma'am, I'm not worried about the construction vehicle. I'm worried about it being there. You know, I've been, I was sent visuals from, to show me what it was supposed to look like, and it was taken on, um, those visuals was taken on four blocks down across the prairie. I've never been shown what they're gonna do in front of my house. And I don't know why they took a residential area to ask for this variance that comes up closer, according to the map, comes up closer to our area than it even does the Bar Nun area.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to take that, that question, Chairman, if you'd like. Um, so, the, the project is directly east of you, uh, Mrs. Burnett. The project is a mile east, uh, from your home. The county emergency regulations require that a solar panel, solar panel facility be, uh, 1.25 miles or greater from its residentially zoned areas. So, we're requesting a waiver, um, down to about .6 miles from home. Um, as I indicated, we are about a mile from your home, and, uh, typically, in other parts of the United States, a setback, an average setback between panels and residences is about, uh, 500 feet. Um, so, I, I think that's the best I can answer, Jason. I don't know, it looks like you have a map there. Would you like to answer further?
I, I believe, maybe I could interject to maybe answer the question. Um, up on our screen, we have what's called the leased area, and that leased area goes clear up to Andy Lane, so that is part of the, the private property that is leased. Um, however, their actual construction of solar panels would be one mile from Andy Lane to the west before they would construct anything, but they have leased right up to Andy Lane. Does that maybe answer the question?
Okay, so there's, so the actual structure, the structures would be a mile out from Andy Lane.
That, that is correct. They would be one mile out.
Okay, and then I don't have, is there anything going on the leased property?
Um, I'm, I'm happy to...
You know, you gotta ask tomorrow. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, well, the, the reason why that area, um, has been leased as adjacent to your property is so that we can have access, uh, during construction, um, for construction vehicles. So, that area, we don't have planned...
You know, you've got to ask tomorrow. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, the reason why that area has been leased adjacent to your property is so that we can have access during construction for construction vehicles. So that area, we don't have plans to put panels there, but we essentially leased it so that we can have a road easement during construction. And the way that our land leases are written is that we have the ability to relinquish land that we don't plan to use for the solar panels. So at the time in the future, we would relinquish that land because we would no longer need it for any kind of construction because the project would be built. So in summary, the project is a mile from your home and your neighbor's home.
If you're going to use that for access, are you going to do anything with the road?
Uh, we will use that for access. We'll be talking to the county about the improvements that we would need to make to that road to be able to use it for construction access.
I, I, somehow I don't understand, I don't understand why. Yeah, I don't under, the only, you brought it up to Andy Road so you could use it for access, is that what you're saying? During construction?
Correct.
I have kind of an echo going, so I'm.
Okay, Shelley, have we answered your questions?
Not really. When I was listening to her, it was really echoed. What I'm trying to find out is, she said that the solar panels wouldn't come closer than a mile to our house. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. This is Jason, maybe I can summarize just a little bit. They've leased clear up to Andy Lane for construction access. There will not be any solar panels built closer than one mile from your property. So to kind of put it in perspective, as you look out there, that very first power line you see?
Right.
That's a little less than a mile, so it's beyond that would be the first solar panels. And they've leased up to your property just for construction access. Christine said that she would be working with the county if they did use Melody Lane to improve it during that construction time.
Okay, well, and I'm not on Melody Lane, I'm on Andy.
And there was a small check at Andy also that would be part of that provision.
That's right in front of my house.
Yep.
That's just for construction, right?
That's just for construction, yes. The application, permanent, as-built access is up off, I believe, Zuni Lane out of Bar Nun.
If I may interject, Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett, I'm looking at Google Maps, and I noticed that your house, there's Melody Lane, which is where we're proposing as a possible access point during construction. Then Ranana Lane, and then your house is north of Ranana Lane. So if we were to use Melanie Lane for access during construction, we would be not coming anywhere near your home. We would be coming on Melody Lane, which is about, I don't know, 2,000 feet or about .38 miles from your home. So you wouldn't experience any truck traffic anywhere near your home.
We're like, we're like confused because the variance, right, but the variance you're asking for to make it where it's not a mile and a half, and I'm, whatever, they want to bring it up to .6 miles, that is in front of my house.
I'm looking at the current layout, and I'm using a Google Earth drawing tool, and from your house, the nearest panel is a mile.
This is the lease.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, this is what I'm worried about, is the lease right here.
The lease.
The lease that comes up, my name is Steve Burnett, and the lease that comes up to Andy Road right in front of our house, what is that going to be used for? Because on the map, and he had up earlier, and there's only one section of that lease that comes up to Andy Road, and that's right directly in front of our house, our block.
So that.
He had the map up earlier.
Yeah, go ahead, Christine.
Sure, Chairman, thank you. As I indicated, oftentimes when we develop a solar project, we will lease a larger area than we actually need for the panels. Oftentimes, we'll lease extra land so that we have the ability to access the site during construction. So yes, we have leased land on the other side of Andy Lane, but that land will not be used for any panels. The land closest to you is surely leased to use it for access, for a road. As I indicated, um, we will not use this land, the land right outside of your house, for solar panels. The nearest solar panel will be a mile away from your home.
Okay, I understand.
I'm happy to have a separate conversation with you, if you'd like, just to call, or next time I can come to Casper, I'm happy to sit down with you.
I understand we're not going to have the solar panels there. I want to know how much traffic that is going to increase in front of my house. If you're going to use that access right there in front of my house.
Just during construction.
Just during construction. Am I right?
So we will be coming off of Melody Lane to Andy Lane, and then we will be heading over on the Sealand property with construction trucks. As we discuss with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we also may have the opportunity to utilize West Winds Road, should we be able to get the access agreements necessary to use that. So it could be that we may never use Melody Lane to access the site, and we may only use West Winds Road. If we end up using Melody Lane, I don't believe we should be having any truck traffic near your home, but I'm happy to sit down with you.
Okay, he, the one gentleman had the map up earlier that was sent to us, and there is a parcel that comes right up to Andy Lane in front of our house. That's not going to be used to access the solar, right?
No, just for construction.
Just for construction. My big worry is how much that is going to affect the traffic.
Okay, so I'm sorry that I don't have the benefit of showing you a map, but we will go on Melody Lane if we use that route. We will head north on Andy Lane for about .8 miles, and then there's a road which you may be familiar with. It's a dirt road that's on Sealand property that heads west. That's the most likely access route that we would be using for construction traffic.
I'm still confused. So why are, what are we accessing off of the parcel that you're asking? The variance or on our, in front of our property? I don't understand.
Are you on the corner roughly of Andrea and Andy Lane? Is that about where your home is?
My home is on Andy Road, and I'm off of Ranana. If you turn on Ranana and turn toward Bar Nun, that's the block I'm on.
Oh, okay.
And that whole entire block is part of this variance that it comes right up against Andy Road.
So I've been handed a map here. I do see your property. So if you will visualize with me, as you go back out on Andy Lane and you drive south, so go past Ranana, and then there's a few trailer homes in there, and then there's a tree cutting service. Can you kind of visualize where that is?
I can.
Keep going south, past the tree cutting company, and about right in there, there's a dirt road that heads off to the west.
I understand completely where Melody Lane is, and that they're going to use that for access.
So we'll be.
I want to know clearly why the variance is being asked for, that brings it, yeah, they are, they're.
The variance is a mile away. I want to know what this little thing is right here to go.
It's a half a mile. I want to know why they're doing, they're asking for the variance to bring it up to a half a mile from our road.
So they won't be a half mile from your road. As you, if you had the benefit of seeing the entire thing up on Bar Nun off of Prairie Lane and Circle Drive off of Bar Nun is where that six tenths of a mile is, at your property, you are a mile away.
Oh, okay, then I totally misunderstood it.
The lease permit area.
Is the lease permit area then?
That's what comes up adjacent near you.
Correct. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I had a big echo going on too, so it's hard to understand a little bit. But what is that for, the lease part?
Just for access only.
During construction.
During construction, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's good.
Okay, Shelley, thank you for your input.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Yes, ma'am.
Tom Van Keefe?
Yeah, Tom, this is Harold Wright with Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission. We're here to address your concerns.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to start off by saying that we are not opposed to Enyo's project. We welcome it, the jobs, the revenue, the tax dollars it will bring. We're just concerned that the current location may pose a risk to both Natrona County under the federal airport sponsor agreement and to Enyo. Now, Enyo met via teleconference last week with some local aviation experts for input, although that was a little late in the game. And as Christine stated earlier, the FAA of no hazard to air navigation only relates to obstruction height. It does not relate to glare. And both 14 CFR 77 and the National Obstacle Evaluation Group Manager, a gentleman named Mike Hely, agree with that. They stated concurrently that the FAA does not evaluate glare. So I want to clear up that any implication that the FAA is finding evaluated glare is either a misunderstanding or an accidental misrepresentation. The FAA guidelines that AECOM refers to for the glare studies are only for airport or airport-owned facilities. They are not for private property or off-airport installations like Dino Solar. So as good Natrona County neighbors pulling for Enyo's success, we understand that Enyo is relying on our inputs as professional pilots, since by their own admission, neither anyone at Enyo nor at AECOM is a professional pilot. The glare study conducted by Enyo and AECOM was using Sandia Labs software, which is limited to surface glare and the short final, two-mile final. It is not for the airport traffic area. Now, your local county aviation professionals asked Enyo to evaluate the overhead VFR circling pattern for glare analysis, which Enyo agreed to do, okay? This investigation is critical for flying operations, especially medevac and life flight operations, but the study's not done yet. So we are strongly suggesting that the P&amp;Z Commission delays a positive vote on the CUP and sending the permit up to the county commissioners to permit Enyo time to complete the glare analysis they agreed to do, allowing a critical safety of flight issue to be addressed. To do otherwise would not allow for a finding of fact regarding, quote, detrimentally affecting public health or safety, to be fully complied with, and it would reflect poorly on everyone involved if this thing would be pushed forward prematurely. We are very sure that Enyo, as a good corporate neighbor, and as somebody who wants to join our community successfully, that they agree to do this. So additionally, the other two things that we would suggest with it, in a conference call on the 8th of May, when concerns about future mitigation were brought up, Enyo stated they would not be opposed to a mitigation bond to address issues that are unforeseen at this time, and that would impact the flying operations and the success of Casper's Airport. We ask that this be included in the permit. And we'd also ask that the commission considers a performance clause so that Enyo and MAP can bring some of their nationwide expertise and influence to help Natrona County achieve the desired goals of adding jobs and growth like server farms and call centers that Enyo has talked about and promised. That way, the project and the county can succeed as advertised. But in the interim, we strongly request that the commission delay approving the CUP until Enyo can complete this very critical glare analysis for the actual traffic pattern, which has not been accomplished. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Christine, can you address this for me, please?
Sure. This is Christine. I do want to share a timeline with you, and that is in December, we repeatedly asked the airport board if we could meet with them. We finally got a meeting with them in January and presented them our glare findings. So we brought an expert in who is a military pilot and who peer reviewed AECOM's glare and lens analysis. We presented to the airport board, and following that, we shared letters with them, thank you notes for allowing us to present to them, and also asked for any input. I believe we did not receive any input until this public process, and Jason and his team shared letters from Mr. Van Keefe and others. Subsequent to that, we had a call on Friday to see how we could address concerns, which we did. On that call, we had representatives from AECOM join us, as well as another pilot. And so tonight, I would like to say that we've complied with all of the FAA regulations, and I will introduce Steve Barrett from Barrett Energy Resources Group to start out addressing Mr. Van Keefe's comments, and I will follow up, if necessary, with anyone on his team and potentially Chester France as a pilot as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephen Barrett, Barrett Energy Resources Group. In 2010, the FAA hired me to prepare its technical guidance on selected solar technologies at airports, which is referred to as the FAA's Solar Guide. And the reason why the FAA prepared the Solar Guide was, in the couple of years previous to that, a number of airports were very interested in leasing out their land for solar projects to gather alternative revenue to support aviation industry and aviation businesses. This was occurring mostly in California, Fresno Airport, Oakland Airport, and also in Colorado, Denver International Airport. So what the Solar Guide did was it provided information on good practices for citing and some of the issues that needed to be addressed to, that were particular to solar projects that would protect aviation safety, and one of those was glare. The Solar Guide recommended that the FAA invest in a solar glare hazard modeling tool, which it did. It worked with the Department of Energy's Sandia National Labs, and it developed what we now refer to as the Solar Glare Hazard Analysis Tool, and that's what AECOM has used to evaluate the project. At the same time, the FAA developed the solar policy. policy, and the solar policy, uh, required any, uh, solar project at an airport to evaluate glare, you know, using the modeling tool in accordance with very specific guidance to look at, uh, potential glare on an air traffic control tower as well as on, uh, pilots on final descent, final approach to the airport runway. And there are a number of other, uh, specific requirements that are embedded in the modeling tool. So the FAA, um, developed this policy for all airports. Uh, if, if you work in the aviation industry, you know, if you've been to one airport, you've been to one airport. Um, but what the, and that's kind of an inside joke in the aviation industry, because all airports are different. You have small airports, uh, that fly, that fly, um, single-engine aircraft. Um, you have international, uh, flights in large, uh, hub airports around the country. But what the, the solar policy did and the recommendations of the FAA was to evaluate, in particular, air traffic control towers is really the most critical, uh, piece of the infrastructure because, uh, towers, uh, if they're affected by glare, they have to wait for the sun to move for that impact to, uh, to stop. But with moving, um, uh, receptors like aircraft, uh, pilots are very used to being exposed to lots of different glare sources, ma- uh, natural sources like Christine mentioned in her introduction, uh, water, uh, reflex glare, uh, as well as, uh, large buildings. And what pilots can do is they can, just as if you're driving on the road and you are driving into the sun, you'll adjust to that. So that's why the standards are different for air traffic control towers, uh, compared to aircraft. But I guess the main point I wanted to make, and I gave quite a bit of, uh, background on this, because I think what, um, what the FAA's solar policy and the glare modeling tool, what it's done is it's created a very certain process for evaluating these particular interests, uh, particular effects on, on very important issues, aviation safety. And the track record since the policy was released in 2013 has been excellent. There has not been complaints, uh, from pilots or from control towers when the modeling tool has been used. The only complaints have been related to concentrating solar, which again Christine mentioned in the beginning. Um, we are, uh, Enyo's project is, is not concentrating solar. It's not using mirrors. It's using, uh, photovoltaic. Um, so I guess that's, uh, kind of a long-winded, uh, introduction to the issue and happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you still there?
This is Tom Van Cleef again. I am, sir.
Go ahead.
Sir, if I may, um, just a question for Mr. Barrett. I understand that he's a pilot.
Um, I am not a pilot. Um-
Mr. Barrett, I am a pilot, and I appreciate that Enyo brought in a military pilot to do a peer review, and I'd like to let the committee know that you have a military pilot here. I'm a professional pilot, a local business owner. I'm a former Air Force fighter pilot and commander with multiple combat tours. I've been a safety officer and an accident investigator. I've served on airport boards and planning and zoning commissions, both in Tarrant County and Grand Prairie, and I've got a degree in public administration. Now, to respond to Mr. Barrett, I understand that he helped develop the solar glare analysis tool. And I understand that that tool is excellent for evaluating the tower and the surface areas. But as the ACOM folks admitted, it does not evaluate the traffic pattern. It only evaluates short final. As far as pilots have to get used to being exposed to glare, as a pilot, I can tell you that if the glare is a fleeting issue, we do get and we do adapt to it. But a glare that is a recurrent and consistent problem at the traffic pattern altitude is a safety of flight issue. Um, and I don't think anybody here wants to have a, a safety of flight problem. I would also point out that the, um, the, the solar projects, the documentation for the FAA and their guidance is for solar projects on an airport. As Enyo and ACOM did admit, the FAA's guidance is not applicable to their project because it's an off-airport project. It's not under the purview of the Airport Commission. It's not under the purview of the Airport Board. It's a private, uh, piece of private property development. But while you may meet all of the FAA's requirements for obstacle clearances and on-airport issues, since this is an off-airport issue and it is falling within the approach corridors, Natrona County has a responsibility under the FAA's Airport Assurance Agreement to mitigate or reduce the risks. And all we're asking is that Enyo, Mr. Barrett, and everybody else be given the opportunity to assess the glare in the traffic pattern before we push forward to a point where Enyo's too far down the road and now we're in mitigation as opposed to adaptation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Good. Steve, rebuttal?
Yeah, I guess I would just, the, the main point I would emphasize is that, um, Enyo has analyzed the project's potential glare impacts using the solar policy and the requirements, uh, that are placed by the FAA for projects on airport property. They've conducted all of the same analysis and demonstrated voluntary compliance. So if there is another, uh, government body that wishes to ask if the project is compliant with FAA rules and policies, even if the FAA has not formally reviewed the project for glare, um, the answer would be that this project does comply with the FAA's glare policy.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Mr. Chair- Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree with Mr. Barrett. The project probably does comply with the FAA's requirements, but the FAA's requirements are limited to on-airport glare and reflection. And if you have a solar panel that is on the airport, it's going to have a different reflectivity pattern, and it's going to be primarily based on ground reflectivity for aircraft that are taxiing, and at certain points in time, the tower. Because aircraft are not overhead of the air- airport routinely unless they're carrying straight through initial at three to five hundred feet. This is why, as one of your professional pilot representatives, one of your professional pilots here in the community who wants to see Enyo succeed, we want to see them succeed, please give them the opportunity to look at the glare problem in the traffic pattern, because this is a unique situation. They are using, and I applaud them for this, they are using the best tools they have available right now, which apply to on-airport. This is an off-airport project. Give them the opportunity to address the concerns so that we can absolutely move forward with a finding of fact saying that safety has not been compromised. Because the ultimate responsibility is not the FAA's. Under the Airport Sponsor Assurance Agreement, that responsibility devolves to the sponsoring organization, which is Natrona County. If there is a hazard in the approaches of the operating area for the airport, it's not the FAA's responsibility to mitigate that. It's not the FAA's responsibility to identify it or address it. It's the airport sponsors, which in this case is Natrona County. And as such, the P&amp;Z Commission is the first line of defense to assist the county commissioners in making sure that Natrona County's airport is not impacted or potentially shut down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Do we have any other, do we have any other email?
I think we're done.
So now we've got a, uh, a conference line open. We'll, we'll open it just for a second and-
If you just turn up the volume.
Hello, is, is anyone on this line?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I, I can hear you. Is there anyone else on here that would wish to make comments in favor or in opposition of this agenda item? Going once? Twice?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, wait a moment.
Yeah, we're, didn't we get? We, we already-
As far as I know.
What the hell are you people doing?
I'm sorry, what is your name?
My name is Roy Rogers.
I apologize, Roy. We thought you were an, an, a different individual.
Well, I, at least I get to talk to you guys.
So-
Sorry about the H-E-double-L there, but you know, you're kind of hearing all this clicking and stuff like it, and I'm going, what the heck's going on here?
All right, Roy, we, we have you on speaker and-
Okay, good.
And the chairman here can, uh, ready to hear your comments.
Well, I, I issued my comments in writing already. I did get a letter, like, uh, the company did send me a letter, but I had a couple of quick questions, maybe three, that I wanted answered. Uh, I heard earlier when you're talking about the Andy Road and that stuff down there, that the solar panels will not be closer than one mile from those people down there. Now, when you look at Prairie Lane and that six-tenths variation, how close is the solar panels going to be there? To the end of Prairie Lane?
So we are- Mr. Chairman, that one is point six-one miles from a residential zoning district on Prairie Lane.
Right. So we're saying that six-point-one, point-six-one miles, there will be solar panels there? From the west end of Prairie Lane?
That is the request.
Okay, then how far will they be from the west end of McMurray?
S- uh, I believe McMurray Boulevard, oh, is- It's just north of Sioux Trail, isn't it?
Yeah, McMurray is that, uh, road when you come up Salt Creek Road and you go up the rise, turn left. It is the south end of the new area of Bar Nun where I live.
It appears to be one-point-one-four miles from, from there.
Okay, one other question, or maybe a couple of questions. With the land, the way it's laid out, how much of this project will actually be visible from up here in the new section of Bar Nun?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Christine, if I can, is there any way I can show my, well, we can't share it. Are you, Roy, are you on YouTube where you're able to see this or just on the phone?
I'm just on the phone, and I can only, I can hear you pretty well right now. You're Jason, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we've talked before. Uh, what I'm trying to figure out is, because the company sent me this, they sent me a, a map and there's these like little white lines on it that's the boundary of the project, but then the thing on the back looks like it's closer to Bar Nun on the back of your notice than the thing on, that they actually sent me. What I'm trying to figure out is they also sent me pictures, and it's from KOP2, which is Absaroka Trail. I, that might be the next road north of me or the road nor, you know, the little side street. And I can't tell any difference in the view from the end of there with what they say is going to look like after they put it in with what it is now. Is that correct?
More than happy to, uh, to look at those visual representations, but it sounds like you have the correct visual representations. The, um, faintly on the horizon, you can see some dark and that would be the solar if it's visible from that location.
Well, it doesn't look like it. I'm just studying the pictures. But I take it what you're saying is, is that the solar panels are going to be west of the main power lines that run through there right now?
That's correct. There's a small set of, well, there is a power line there to the west, and it's west of that power line.
Okay, so when I'm coming up Salt Creek Road from like Loafin Jug and the exit, you know, the entrance and exit on I-25, will I be able to see any part of that solar project from Salt Creek Road?
I'd have to look at the solar, uh, the visual representations, but I don't believe so.
And the only place, are you saying then that the only place you'd probably be able to see it from the town would be out on the end of Prairie Lane?
I'm looking at some visual representations here. Um-
Yeah, and I don't have my, I don't have a computer. I'd have to go someplace to use a computer. And I, I'm just trying to get a picture of what this looks like for a resident that lives up here. You know, you're talking, the company's talking about, it won't affect our community and it won't affect our property values. Well, so much of that depends on how visible it is. I mean, if it's there and it's dominating the landscape, it will affect our property values. If it's over a rises and it's carefully engineered so that it's not really visible from the town, then we don't even worry. I know the aviator, the pilot was worried about glare from the ground up. I'm worried about glare and about just the appearance of the community is what my primary concern is.
From the visual representations, probably the place you can most readily see it is on the new west belt loop, uh, between 2026 and Robertson Road as you crest the hill there and you have power service and then the-
Look, yeah, you're talking about when you go up just past the, coming, uh, north on Salt Creek up on that rise where they have that substation, then you can see it there, correct?
I was talking about, uh, over there by McMurray Concrete. So clear over, uh-
Yeah.
2026 by the bypass, that's probably the most prevalent, uh, spot there to see it. Uh, I'm more than happy to, to, to be able to share some of these visual representations with you. Um, I, I know we're kind of in odd times here at the moment, but I would be more than willing-
Yeah, I know. I would, I would have come by and saw you personally, and, and then we could have looked over the project better. And I would have attended this hearing today so that I could hear and talk to these people in person.
I, I'm more than happy to meet you in the parking lot. You, you call our office and I'll, I'll come down there with these visual representations and we can sure look at it. And, um, as far as the process goes, this, uh, this goes to the Board of County Commissioners next, so maybe we could have those visuals to you before that hearing so you could see that.
Yeah, yeah, because are we still anticipating having another one of these, uh, electronic hearings on the 2nd of January? Or are we going to try to open up and do regular business again?
I think that's unknown at this point.
Okay, okay, yeah. But like I said, for the county commish- or the board and everything else and the company too, my biggest concern is, is that this thing is not an eyesore, that it doesn't affect people's, the visual, I mean, the town's getting to be a dump enough at the way it is. And, uh, I'd be, and I would just categorically say that the mayor and the town board don't speak for me. I think they are horrible. They've mismanaged the zoning around here. And, uh, so when they say that they don't object to it, I don't trust them. But if I, if I can see stuff which will show me that it's not, uh, really visible from the community, then I'll, then I probably wouldn't have any opposition to the project unless it would be a safety issue, and I'm not a pilot, so I don't know.
Okay, Roy, I think we can accommodate that, and I appreciate your input.
Okay.
If you'll get with Jason, uh, I'm sure that he's more than happy to accommodate you.
Apologize for the mix-up initially, Roy.
Yeah.
Okay, Jason, I'll give you a call and maybe I can come down there and meet you sometime later this week or early next week. How would that be?
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you, Roy.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else on the line besides Roy? Mr. Chairman, I believe you've heard all the public comment. You can proceed.
Okay. Uh, with that, I would open it up for- Okay, uh, with that, I would open it up for discussion and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for. Jason, a couple of questions for you. So I share Chairman Wright's concern about the, um, dust and as you know, there's no way to hold it down when the wind's blowing a hundred miles an hour. I don't care what you put on it, it peels the... Whatever you put on there is, it's going to, so the experience that I'm familiar with is that a bond, um, I'd recommend the county requiring a bond for, um, damage done by wind-blown dust, because I, I noticed that the town of Bar None, a lot of that is in the southwest track of general wind there and they've got a lot of nice, uh, homes there with nice yards and we've seen in the past where, um, what comes to mind is the Amaco refinery reclamation years ago. That was a big mess. So that's one thing would be a suggestion that, um, Enio have to provide a bond for landscaping or wind-blown problems.
Good.
So another question is, this project's thirty-five years in duration, seventeen hundred acres of actual, um, solar panels and there's a path for west winds to potentially go through there. I'm wondering, what's the difference in this and, and, and any other industrial type development that would come in? Typically, you'd have a, you'd have a plat with dedicated public rights of way. Is that something that the county might want to consider is requiring the owners of the property to provide as part of this project a, uh, right-of-way for west winds through this area? Just a question. I know you probably can't answer it now, but it seems like that might be the time to do it.
You do, you mean that?
I'm talking about actually providing the right-of-way instead of just a path.
You're referring to like maybe a, a road easement through, through that piece or a, a right-of-way that's dedicated to, um, the county for public use or for, to the public?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think they have it, they addressed it, I think Christine addressed it, and you can crack me if I'm wrong, excuse me, but they, but you've addressed working with the county on an extension of west wind, but you don't know where it's at right now. Is that a true statement? Or you don't know where it, it may go through your wind farm and you said that you could move that back and forth and flip your panels on one side of that or the other, but you're not sure where that road's going to go yet?
Chairman Wright, uh, this is Christine Michael. That, that's correct. Um, we have the flexibility to adjust our layout to accommodate the west winds road. I, I appreciate the comment, um, that we get a right-of-way for westerns road, but, um, and, uh, Mr. Masterson, my attorney, might be able to speak to this better than, and I can't. Uh, we have a lease for the land for the solar panels. Um, I think the county would have to work directly with the landowners to get a right-of-way, um, in their name, in an easement in their name. I, I don't know that that's something that we could do and then assign to the county. That would be a question that maybe Mr. Masterson could answer or we could get back to you on.
Mr. Chairman, um, I can touch on that real quick if you would like.
You bet.
Um, I think the concern I would have would be that, um, it's a, if this is a private project that is located on private land and as the idea of trying to get a public right-of-way in connection with that private project on private land could be problematic if it, you know, you're trying to somehow work a, a public right-of-way as a, as a part of that agreement. I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it could, it, it, it raises flags in my lawyer brain about the, the practical ability to do something like that.
I believe that.
Mr. Chairman, John, the county has the ability to condemn that road where they want it, I would guess, and that may be, if you couldn't work one out with the landowner, might be the way that they have to end up doing it.
They certainly have the ability to condemn that road, Mr. Chairman. But that's, that's obviously their position.
Okay, thank you, John.
Any similar development that would come to the city or even county, I guess, for a subdivision, you would have to have a road punched to and through, correct?
You'd, you'd have access to a, a development.
And then all the way through so that.
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, no, you don't need to get through the project. If they came with west winds road and came right up to the edge of that leased land and remember it's leased, it's not their land, then they can go anywhere they want on that leased land and they don't need an easement across it.
I'm afraid the point's being missed. There's, there's a large development here, it's going to be here for a long time. The long-range transportation plan shows a road going through there. I think it would be an opportunity now for the county to secure that land as part of this project if they want it.
I think we should look into it, please.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't mean to imply that we are adverse to it, anything like that. I, I'm just not quite sure what it looks like and the ability to work within the confines of what this project is. I just don't know.
I understand, thank you.
And just another, one more question, Mr. Chairman. Um, representation's been made that a certain percentage, I think twenty-five, maybe more percent would, of local, um, labor would go into building the thing. How is that going to be tracked or who's, how is that going to be documented? That's all I have.
Christine, would you have anything to add to that last comment about the twenty-five percent local labor being tracked?
Um, Chairman, if, if you don't mind, I might pass that question on to Ron Dutton, who provided the socioeconomic support work. Ron has had experience, um, on industrial siding, permit applications where this point has come up. Um, Ron, are you able to answer this question? How, how to, how you could manage that as a, maybe a condition of the permit?
Yes, this is Ron Dutton and, um, as Christine mentioned, I did the social and economic support. Uh, basically, I think the pretty direct way would be just to ask the primary contractor just to document the place of residency of employees when they're hired onto the job or their, if they have a subcontractor or things like that. You don't want to make it too onerous because there's a lot of, um, change in labor force as they go through the different, uh, task. But it's pretty easy just to say, when you report where your current place of residence is and then they could provide information, um, at the, the end of each year, uh, between the two different ones or do a, a, a periodic report back to the commission to figure out where people are being hired from.
Things are pretty tough in Nautrona County right now and it'd be a shame if all this was built and overlooked that requirement that the local folks get a shot at this.
I, I might, Chairman, if I may, I might have Evelyn Carpenter, um, talk about practically speaking how that, that would work during construction. Evelyn?
Um, thank you and thank you, Commissioners. Um, so we oversee construction on projects and we're actually overseeing construction right now on two different hundred and fifty megawatt wind projects in Missouri. Um, and we have similar requirements, um, from the county commissioners and on a real practical level, we track a couple of different things. One of them is the origin of the labor force, where it's coming from, and then the contractors also track local spending. So how much are they spending with the local gas stations and the local supply companies and things like that? And so, um, it's pretty, um, standard for construction companies to actually track this and when you do contracting with them, you just put a, a paragraph in the contract asking them to report, you know, what the local spending and then the local population is that they're hiring. And they'll also, just from a practical standpoint, it's better for them to try to recruit locally because otherwise they're bringing people in and paying per diem and it just becomes more expensive. And so they will have, uh, they'll go out and, and put job fairs out and things for the local population to try to recruit qualified candidates to help with construction of the facility. And so it's, it's very common practice, um, when you're building these large projects because of the volume of labor required, you do try to source as much locally just for cost purposes. Um, and so that, that's something that, um, construction contractors are pretty accustomed to.
Okay, thank you. I think that pretty well answers it. Al?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. Uh, at the end of this project, and I'm talking about the life of the project, are these panels recycled or are they become a hazardous waste?
Who's up?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Christine. Evelyn, do you want to keep going with that or have Arun help you? What, uh?
Yeah, so, um, as a practical nature, um, we do recycle as much as possible and panels are recycled. Um, and so when you decommission the facility, you'll take out, um, as an example, you'll, you'll cut your steel piles three feet below grade, you'll recycle all of that material that you can, it goes to scrap and then, um, you recycle the solar panels. Um, the recycling is, um, we're, folks are actually buying old solar panels and installing them at other places, so sometimes they're reused and then sometimes they are actually recycled, but we seek to keep as much as we can out of landfill, um, so.
Does that address your question?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Along that same line, I have a couple of questions. You said in your contract with the landowner that you will be bonding for the deconstruction or whatever you call taking it down at the end. Is there a chance, and I assume that's going to be a bond of some type with the landowner? Is there a chance that we could get the county and/or the state on that bond? Um, I have seen so many of these projects out there go that, uh, somebody has bonded and they go away and, and the bond is given to somebody and then all of a sudden the state and county get to, uh, uh, clean it up and they're not on the bond. And I wonder if, if the possibility of getting the county at least and maybe the state on that bond, because I would guess that in twenty fifty-eight, um, we're going to, somebody's going to pay for it and I would suggest that we're on a bond, uh, for the county at least that, would that be a possibility?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the comment and appreciate the concern. Um, in, in talking to, to John and, uh, to the county attorney and Jason today, uh, we are required to have a bond with the landowner, but I believe we could, um, likely have the bond issued in the name of the county and then we could ha, amend our land lease to, to state that, um, um, the, as long as the county has a bond, we don't also need a, a bond for the landowner. So if it's the county, based on, uh, the motion that Jason has up on the screen right now, if it's the requirement that we have a reclamation bond in place in the name of the county, we're, we're certainly happy to accommodate that request.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one other quick question, Mr. Chairman. You have in our packet several letters that talk about revenue to the county and it says two million generated in property tax the first year and then forty-six million over thirty-five years, which drops that down to, uh, slightly over a million dollars a year. Why is that such a big drop, number one? And number two, uh, you've given some other numbers, two point nine six million projected retail and eight point seven million in sales and use tax. Where did those numbers come from?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Christine. I will allow, um, Ron Dutton, who put together the socioeconomic analysis, to explain, uh, his analysis to get to those numbers.
So this, this is Ron again and so, uh, there were a couple of questions there. One was the difference between the first year, the average, and then basically the out year of the ad valorem taxes. And so since this particular project is not part of a regulated utility, we use the standard, uh, industrial assessment processes of starting off with the initial value and then having them depreciate at two and a half percent a year until they get to a residual value of twenty-five percent. So we kind of got that information in discussion with Wyoming Department of Revenue. It's similar to what they use for wind turbines or whatever, but we, as Christine mentioned earlier, they do depreciate over time.
Right.
So we were calculating the property tax values, the ad valorem, over time as it depreciates until it gets to that twenty-five percent value. The, excuse me, you have a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, on the issue of sales and use tax, we have two different computations there. One is essentially the improved or the value of purchases of taxable materials that would go into the project. And that number that you referred to was the combination of the, uh, four percent sales and use tax levied by the state of Wyoming and then the one percent local general purpose tax that Nautrona County, um, currently, uh, levies as applied to the property tax or the, uh, values and that, uh, is summarized in page thirteen of your, the application and then back in appendix T, there's additional detail, but that was basically based on the taxable value of materials and equipment.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And then I think the other.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I thought you had a third question there, which was essentially on the retail sales and spending. Um, what we did there is apply kind of a standard approach to saying, all right, we're not sure what the level of local hiring of qualified labor is going to be, so we bracketed it between twenty-five and fifty percent. We said for those that are coming from out of town, they're going to have an average lodging expense, they're going to have retail expenditures such as gas, food, things like that, and we allowed for the fact that under Wyoming statute, some of those purchasers are, are not taxable, some are, so we again adjusted for the total spending down to what is taxable under Wyoming statute and then calculated that out over the fifteen months and aggregated it up that total. So that's where those numbers come from.
Okay, thank you. One other quick question, Mr. Chairman. I'm going quick, we got five minutes, huh? No. Am I correct in assuming that you have not sold this power yet? Christine?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, uh, you are correct. We will not build the project unless we saw the output of the power. The utility Rocky Mountain Power will be issuing a request for proposal this summer, requesting three hundred and fifty-four megawatts of, uh, solar, uh, to come from Wyoming and so we would like to, um, if we, subject to getting the conditional use, we'd like to submit our application to provide them those megawatts.
So then, so there's stuff in the, in the mill to get this power sold?
That, that's correct. That's why we're before you tonight because Rocky Mountain Power is seeking three hundred and fifty-four megawatts from Wyoming.
And if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the reason for the timing, uh, that you're now looking at is, uh, this project becomes much more viable and becomes, uh, much more likely to get that, uh, contract with Rocky Mountain Power if it has its permit granted. Uh, it's really essential to, uh, to being able to have that project in Nautrona County instead of seeing it migrate out of the county or out of the state.
Okay, thank you, John. Well, gentlemen.
One more question before we make a motion.
Shoot.
Uh, addressing the approach pattern glare analysis that Mr., what was his name again? Van Cleve?
Cleve.
Yeah.
Cleve requested.
Paul.
Is, is that one of these things, it kind of a never-ending project, because I'm not sure how many approach patterns there are, who's going to do what? Is that something that is feasible?
Is that something that is feasible to do or is it one of these things that's very hard to pinpoint in as much as there's so many variables and the way people fly? I guess that's my question to an annual representative.
Can you address that, please?
I could if I was, sorry, I'm muted. Mr. Chairman, this is Christine. I'd like to introduce Keenan Sims to answer that question. Keenan, are you able to do so?
Yes, hi, this is Keenan Sims. Mr. Van Cleef mentioned a glare analysis tool. I actually co-invented it when I worked at Sandia National Labs, and we did work with FAA on developing their glare analysis policy. And I think that was part of their, why their policy is the way it is, that looking, I don't know what Mr. Van Cleef wanted in particular, but looking at every possible flight track and pattern around an airport would be a pretty substantial task, and it's definitely not standard. That's why their policy looks at these specific approach paths and also looks at the tower. And that's kind of the norm for doing these analyses.
I see, so it's like almost an ever-ending project to cover all bases, is that correct?
I don't know the particulars of what Mr. Van Cleef wanted, but that could be what ends up happening if you want to look at every possible pattern. Yeah, that would be a never-ending thing.
Thank you.
Seems to me, I recall, he wanted a bond for, in case it caused a problem.
That's not our call. Okay, with that, then I'm going to close this public hearing, and if there's no more discussion on this thing...
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of points of discussion with Jason maybe on our motion before we get to that. Do you think we ought to tighten this road thing up, number, what, 1-2, bullet point four? Road improvements shall be to county road standards and shall be maintained throughout the entire construction phase. Do we need to tighten that up to say that they will do that? That they will improve if they use these internal roads in that bar none and south where it's not a, I think they're in the county there, that they will have to improve those roads? I mean, they could go in there for a couple of months and probably tear up all those roads and not improve them and walk away. And so that's a question maybe Ruin Ridge would want to talk to, but I'd like to get that into our motion if we want to tighten that up. Unless you think this is adequate, then that's absurd.
Certainly open to suggestions, that was the intent. Road improvements shall be constructed to county road standards and shall be maintained throughout the entire construction phase. This includes dust and drainage controls.
Well, you said, excuse me, but you said road improvements. So if they improve the road, they have to meet this. But what if they don't improve the road? Then they just drive down the road?
Mr. Chairman, we're open to any kind of amendment to that, to clarify that, to the commission's liking. The intent was if they're going to use those roads that are dedicated to public use but not publicly maintained, to improve them.
Maybe we should say that.
Roads brought up to county standards.
Instead of road improvements, just say...
Yeah, to county standards.
Yeah, something there that would, something there that would get, if they don't improve the roads, and just, but they have to, if they use them, they have to do something to them.
Okay.
Out there. So I think there's something that maybe we could do with road. If internal public roads are used, they shall be brought to county, something like that. You know, we can work on some language there among ourselves. Jason, do you believe that we ought to include, you've included the YDOT, you've included game and fish, you've included, should we include FAA standards? I, you know, this is a real sticky point with me, because this thing's outside of the FAA boundaries. They have gone to the FAA above and beyond, and I see in some of their letters, they had some suggestions of, but then the FAA kind of backed out and said, well, it's really not within, it's not within our distance around the airport, so we don't care, but here's some stuff, you know? And I was wondering if you wanted to do that. And the county bond, that's all I had. So it's up, whatever you might think. We have a county commissioner here tonight, you can nod your...
You can't talk.
Can you nod your head if you'd like to see that?
The applicant has met all the required standards and the regulations that we've adopted. They've added...
All right, well, that's as good as we are right now.
I'm sure we're going to need some help with this motion. So Jim, proceed on.
Well, alluding to one Jason first presented, in as much as the project to which the CUP is applying is not in compliance with the 1.25 mile setback, then I will make a motion to approve CUP 20-1, together with the five conditions provided by staff, subject to approval of the variance.
Second it.
Mr. Chairman, we have six items shown on the screen.
There's something missing from your book.
It's probably that very last bullet point, financial assurance agreeable to the board for the decommissioning per the zoning resolution.
Yeah, I don't have that here. So I would amend the motion.
Okay.
Incorporating the six conditions recommended by staff.
Second it.
So you read? So my question now is, do we hold that motion and move to the variance, or do we vote on that motion and move to the variance?
Vote on it.
Okay.
One quick question. Could you help us with language on number four, where it says road improvements?
Road improvements will be brought to and main, well...
No, we want to, I think we want to get rid of improvements, and say if these roads are used, if these public roads are used, they will be, they shall be brought to county road standards.
And maintained as such?
And maintained throughout, right. But I'm looking for something for, to delete improvements and change that to...
I think you phrase it beautifully, what you just said.
Could you read that back, please?
I would suggest just going with what's here with the direction for staff to figure out wording. What I'm concerned with is roads, what roads, how, we have to pinpoint the roads and what use is.
Well, are we, yeah. We don't know where they're going to go yet, do we?
Well, and if they travel down a road periodically, I mean, we just have to be more specific. And I can't do that on fly.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, but I, it seems like it's going to be too hard for this group.
I don't think it's too hard, I just think it will take some time, and it would be better to give it some thought, knowing what you want.
Yeah, I think Jason knows what we're looking for here.
But once we get this in a motion, then we're stuck with it. We've got to fix it down the road. So we say all of these, and Jason gets to work on this with you?
Pending adjustments to road improvements.
I'm sorry, what?
Pending to...
I said pending adjustments.
Oh, okay. That works.
To road improvement.
Adjustments to the condition for road improvements, is what we're saying.
That's right.
Pending adjustments to the conditions for road improvements.
Mainly because what is brought up here is we don't know which roads they're going to drive.
Yeah. And if they go down a road one day, out there looking, we're not going to have them fix that road up. But if they start running their trucks and trailers down through there, then we've got to get that road brought up.
So I have a motion, and I have a second on this conditional use permit, any further discussion. If not...
Do we need, do we need to, did you amend your motion to put that pending wording in it?
Pending adjustments to the conditions for road improvements.
Okay.
With that, I would call for the vote for, all in favor of this conditional use permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries. Moving on now to the variance. I would entertain a motion to accept the variance.
No, I'll make it again.
You're on the roll.
You don't have one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move approval of variance VC 20-1 as recommended by staff incorporating findings of fact.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so any further discussion or any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries. This will be heard in this room on the 2nd of June at 5:30 by the Board of County Commissioners, and we thank you for your participation. This was all new to us, and...
They were a great help.
I'd like to meet you sometime. Thank you. With that, I guess it says any public comment, but I don't know if we're going to get any, so...
I don't think we have anybody else on the line. Was there anyone else on the line for, was there anyone else on the line for public comment? I move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.
Do you want this?
Please.